Okay, well, let's go ahead and start. I'm Laurel Green, and I'm one of seven people who volunteered to be in that committee in our town to increase participation in town meeting. And that's how we got to this event today. Steve Proctor is also on the team, and Meg Lucas is on the team as well. It's a team of seven. I've sort of been working on this for the last few months. Welcome. Nice to see you. Stop by and get a handout on the table. Teresa.
Thanks.
Simon. So the big idea today is to just give the overview on how a town meeting works, how you can take part in it. And I know that a lot of the people here came by special invitation, and some people came because they saw the advertising, the write-up thing in front which form. So it's really about how is our town governed? And one of the really exciting things by living in Vermont is that we have an in-person, each voter is basically a legislator for our town meeting, where you have the power to help decide what happens in the town. And we want people to feel empowered to do that. What I'd like to do is have the people who have a particular role in town already stand, and we'll just give you a brief introduction. So Rick, Alan is on the select board. Thank you for your work there.
Sure.
Beautiful, let Cameron on the select board. One item, I'd like to bring up on the backside of your handout.
Okay, we can do that later.
We've got Rockingham Town Budget on here, and it's not voted on, but voted on February 1st.
Okay, great. That's exactly why.
People don't get confused, and I'll go in place. We're not shy at all.
I'm Paul Bohuski. I'm the village president, and I'm also the town moderator and the Rockingham School moderator.
I'm Amy Allen. I'm the chairman of the Saxon River Village Board of Trustees. Similar to a select board, but we're a smaller municipality, we have trustees.
All right. The other person that I would like to introduce is Leslie Goldman.
Leslie.
Yeah. Leslie?
Hey, I'm Leslie Goldman. I'm one of the two representatives of the House in Montpelier, representing Rockingham, Westminster, and Montpelier. But Rockingham is our town center.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Delilah Hall. I'm on the planning commission. I'm from Montpelier.
Great. Then you can just.
Just come in.
Priscilla's making her name tag over there. All right. Just ready. Wait a second. I have to introduce myself. All right.
Why don't you sign me in? I'm Dave Lambert. Just for a hug.
Old citizen. Okay, well, I'll go ahead. Sorry. Just so you know, we have a local in town.
I'm the chair of the Rockingham Board.
Thank you very much. Okay, so there are some ways to get information in our town. Our town has a website. It's rockbf.org. And right now, on the homepage, it has the revised warning for town meeting. It has a link to the fiscal report for 2023, which is if you have a copy of the town report, that's what this is. There are a few copies over there. They don't have the stickers that have the new dates on them. So we'll keep reminding you about the date changes. There are also, there's access on the town website for the agendas and the minutes for the board meetings. And it's a great way to get to the Zoom link, so you can attend a meeting or show up in person for a meeting. Or if you missed it, you can get that information from the minutes. So important ways for you to know about how to get information in our town. Yeah.
Just one note from the addition of getting information from the agenda versus as well as the minutes. But if you really want details, you can always go to fact and re-watch the meeting, which you get a lot more out of. The minutes might direct you on where and what you want to look for, but fact will show you the whole program.
Right.
Very good information source.
Many of the faculty folks are here today reporting this. There are people who let me know they wouldn't be able to come and really wanted to see what happens today. So really appreciate Rick and Alex for coming today and filming this and getting word out. Before I go further, what I'd really like is to have you introduce yourself to three people you don't know in the room. And I'm going to just give you like three, no, I'll give you five minutes to do it. But you need to stand up and scramble, because a lot of people know each other, and some people don't know each other. And this is your time to shake hands and say, how do you, I'm a neighbor of yours in town. So on your mark, get set, go.
Want to get some view? You look familiar. I'm not sure if there's anything.
Fifteen years. We're interviewing them.
I think we have.
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years.
We're interviewing them.
Especially if you want to ball with you started.
Finish that sentence and go sit down now.
You didn't miss them.
Maybe it's a break this week.
Let's go sit down.
Wait, he's just stuck in. Thanks. Good to see you. So in that interlude, Weyton Sher came in, who is on our Board of Trustees, right? Yeah. So we just introduced the people who have an official role in town, and now people have a chance to say hi to somebody you don't know yet. So I hope that was useful. It was hard to bring you back together, which just proves people want to be together and get to know each other and make our town work better and better. It's heartwarming to me that the room just went into a roar of conversation. Wasn't that great? Amazing. All right, so many of you know, but some of you might not, just a little tiny bit about our town. This is a very rough sketch, and I'm sorry, my body's going to be in the way for some of you. So the Connecticut River runs along the east side, and Route 5, and then Route 91, basically parallel the river. Down the center, we have Parker Hill Road, and then Rockingham Hill Road. And parallel to that is Brockway Mills Road and Pleasant Valley Road. And then going basically east-west, we have 103 that goes over to Chester, and we have Route 121 that goes over to Cambridgeport. This follows the Williams River, and this follows the Saxon's River. So we have two major drainages to the Connecticut. And we've got some hills and a little. So when we talk about the town of Rockingham, it's this whole thing. And when we talk about the village of Bellows Falls, it's this little corner down here. And we talk about the village of Saxon's River. It's the corner right here. But there's also Cambridgeport, Bartonville, off around Lower Bartonville, Brockway Mills. And then the area here where the old meeting house is was the old Rockingham Center. So you might hear people talk about, I live in Cambridgeport, or I live in rural Rockingham. That means I don't live in Bellows Falls or Saxon's River, but I live someplace else. Might be one of those old villages, and it might not be. But these two are incorporated villages at this point. And so that's why there's trustees for the village of Bellows Falls and for Saxon's River. So I hope that helps clarify sort of the geographical rounding of this. All right, so questions so far? Is that helpful? I think some people get confused about that. So just very basics about town meeting. The first really key thing is people have to be registered to vote to be able to participate in town meeting. And the state of Vermont, you know, it just is moving to me how much Vermont wants people to be able to vote. They want to make it easy to register to vote. You can register online. You can register through paper documents. You can go to the town clerk's office and register ahead of time. Or you can just show up at town meeting and register, or show up at the pole at the Nasonic Temple, which is the building just north of here, and sign up to vote the day of an election. It's like, there's a generosity of spirit. We want to include everybody, and I just find that really profound. There's places in our country that are not like that. So that's the first step. I noted on the handout that the town clerk's office are Monday through Thursday, 7:00 in the morning till 4:30 in the afternoon. So don't try to go there on Friday. You won't be able to see Kathleen Nehaw. She had meant to come today and then had a conflict at the last minute, so she wasn't able to come. And the same thing with our town manager, Scott Pickup, has a family situation and wasn't able to come today, but he had hoped to. So they're, they both stand in support of people knowing how to participate in a meeting. So the next key step is to give and read a copy of the annual report. These are amazing documents with lots of really good information, starting with a really capable table of contents. You can get a random one. You have the list of all of the officials and when their terms of service end. Yeah, if you want one and you don't have one. These are rarities. There's 400 of these. How many people in town?
Forty-eight, thirty-two.
Okay, just under 5,000 people. So if you want one of these treasures, be sure to get your hands on one. I hear that they're going to be more printed up.
Yes, I remember on twice, and one day when they get another chance to get back to town hall, it'll be re-pulled again.
Great. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the select board being on top of that. And I hope it's because we're causing all kinds of big trouble talking about town meeting. More, hopefully, if more people participate, if they have the information, right? So there's the, all the.
Just one thing, that it's really, because there are not enough copies for everyone in town, it's important to share. You know, if you're in a household with more than one person, just take one copy for your household. But very important, bring it with you to town meeting, because there won't be enough copies to give you a second.
See, maybe they came up nice and early this. I was pretty pleased about that, actually.
Yeah, we usually generally print up about 300, 350 of them. In the past, because of the great attendance we've had at these things, a lot of people pick them up, we ended up throwing away about half of them. So this year, I don't know what it's already is, maybe the picture, I don't know, but they are going out of here like hotcakes. We're going out, so, yeah.
Is it available as PDF online on the website?
Yeah, it's on the website, and right on the homepage of the website is the link to PDF. It's very easy to get online. So.
And just let's not forget the recent survey that reached that too.
Yeah, we're actually just circle back to that later.
But I'm just saying, the reasoning behind, maybe we're having a lot more of these handouts going out is maybe the, you know, the recent survey as well.
Yep, it's on people's minds. Maybe your hard work is also paying off.
Are you, are you going to mention the town school district report as well?
Yeah, you know, I don't have as much information about that, so we have somebody in the audience. Well, the audience can help us out on that. But just kind of walking through the town report, there are the warnings for all the different meetings. So there's the town school district, there's the high school, the, you know, it's a union high school, so it serves several towns. There's our town, our own town warning, the River Valley, Technical Center District, which also serves a number of towns. All of those different ones have to be warned according to law, so that people have a chance to find out the information, get a hold of the reports, read them, and make up their own mind. It's like, wow, amazing, ton of information in here, including lots of financials. And I know in a town that I lived in previously, there were people who picked through this and would go line by, line item by line item, because they had a real concern, either, you know, for making sure that children get what they need in the schools, or they're really worried about their taxes and want to lower the rate and take out anything that's fat, that they saw as excess. And you get to have your own opinion. And then there's this great part in the back where there's reports from your town officers, from the town committees. From this year, we're hearing from a whole slew of nonprofits that the town gives some money to, and you get to read what they're doing, and you get to decide whether you want to continue approving money for them, increase the money for them, cut the money for them. We get to decide as a community. And then in the back, there's another really good resource, which makes it worth keeping this on your shelf, there are emergency phone numbers. They're how to contact different people in government. And so this book is just a wealth of resources. Some families keep them year by year, and they have a whole collection, because they're so proud of our town. I keep them for a couple of years, and then I shuffle them through to the recital. But just really important key documents, so being registered to vote, having the town report, reading it, getting familiar with it, learning about your town. And then the third thing is to show up, whether that's to the in-person town meeting, where we actually act on the articles in the morning, where we make those decisions. And you could come to the Nasonic Temple and vote for the, there are some specific articles that are only voted on the paper ballot, called Australian Ballot, it's a late 1800s, sort of antiquated at this point, but it's a paper ballot, printed out. And so that's, you know, you have to show up. Now, in Vermont, again, we want to have people be able to vote, so if you're going to be absent, and you can't do absentee voting at town meeting, you have to be there in person. You can watch on Zoom, but you can't vote on Zoom. You have to be there in person. And I, some people, that's been confusing, as we went through COVID, there was some confusion about that. But now it's really clear, the state has put down the word that we're not going to vote by Zoom. It's too hard to check your voter list that way, is my understanding. So show up in person. Yeah.
As far as the school book, it used to be published within the town one, but now it's published as a separate book. It covers all of the schools, the elementaries, the middle school, covers the high school. And it's, it's available at the town clerk's office in all of the towns. It also will be available Monday night at the high school meeting, the 26th, at 7:00, which is not on this list, is the high school meeting. So that, and that has the same format basically as the town report. It covers the, the chairs write a report for it, the principals have one in there, the superintendent has one in there, and it gives the budgets and all of the information, just like the town report does.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I tried to gather the information that I could for this meeting, and I'm missing pieces, you know, like, you know, the information on the back that Peter was pointing out that's incorrect, because it's a little hard to find, to settle out what the current situation is.
Can I just ask, why did they end up separating from being one total report versus two separate? Because I just.
I think because of the printing, for one thing, and gathering it all together, because it covers all of the elementary schools, Westminster, Black Athens, and all the ones here, and the high school. And so it would have made it really double, at least double the size. And so by doing it that way, and some people are not interested as much in the, in the schools as they are in town, and so if they don't want to vote.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
It's voting like just the same format, though it's a annual meeting at the high school, just like the Vidalia Tech at the high school, and I know they'll be available there.
Right. So, yeah, so there's, there's the Rockingham Town Meeting, there's the school meeting that you were just mentioning, there was the tech meeting, and all of those, you have to show up in person to take part in those. And at town meeting, there's part of the school, there's, on town, the evening of town meeting, we're having it in the evenings, there's a section of the evening for the schools, and then a section for the town, and the tradition is to switch those year to year. So one year, the school board, the school portion comes first, and the town comes second. That's how it's going to be this year.
It's just the school.
School first. Comes first. Yeah. All right. So I think that's what I had to say about just those basic steps. So town meeting itself is very much run by Robert's Rules of Order, and Paul has become an expert on that, but so has the chair of any of the boards, you know? Peter's fabulous with Robert's Rules. Unfortunately, sometimes I say robots rules, because it was this.
It's a free.
Robot's order. If I make a mistake, you're correct. So the town meeting and the articles have to be warned ahead by state regulation. It can't be more than 40 days, and it can't be less than 30 days. And unfortunately, because of a number of things that happened, the original warning came out at about 28 days, so it was too late, and has put us through this whole shenanigans of resetting the meeting. So on the handout, you'll see that the original date was March 4th, which I just think is a great day, you know?
March 4th, what's going on?
But we had to cross that one off, postpone it to April 1st, which is not an April Fool's joke, it's the real thing. Just, you know, want to be clear about that. So the articles are warned ahead of time, so voters can make sure they're up to date and know how they want to act and vote. The town report is made available ahead, and eliminated, number printed, and so we need to share it when we said that already. The meeting is led by the town moderator. Each article that has been warned and is going to be voted on the floor at town meeting, some of them say Australian Ballot, and they'll be voted in at the Nasonic Temple in person the following day. Each article's read, I believe it has to be read twice, right?
Correct.
And then it gets moved, seconded, and then there's an open time for discussion, where people can stand in support of it, say why they don't think we should pass it, can make amendments to change it, and we just follow the rules of order on doing all of that. And that's the time where people get to stand up and speak their mind. One of the interesting things is we meet, currently meet in the Bellows Falls Opera House, and to be an active part of the meeting, you have to be in front, you have to be in the seating area. You can't be hanging out behind, chatting with somebody on that rail across the back and expect moderator to see you and call on you. You have to be actually in the meeting, just part of the culture right here in our town. Not every town has that. So if you want to speak, you raise your hand, you raise your voter card, so that you're easy to see. The moderator calls on you, and you need to wait for the microphone to come, which people have hard to remember in that. But there's enough of us in town that are hard of hearing, we need your voice to go through the microphone. You can stand, identify yourself, and then you say whatever you have to say about the article that's open for comment, for discussion. After the comments, the amendments, all of that, the vote, someone will call the vote, and then everyone who's registered to vote gets to vote. Usually it's a voice vote, eyes, it's for to say yes and no, or nay to say no. And then the moderator says, the ayes have it or the nays have it. If there's a question about that, we can go to a fancier version, is how I think of it, which could be a division of the house, where people actually stand or raise their voter cards and have those counted by the justices of the piece. Or people can call for a paper ballot, and a certain number of people have to stand for there being a paper ballot, which takes a lot longer than people groaning and all. But then you really know, you had, you know, 97, four, and 23 to dance, or whatever the count is. Being a citizen legislator is a wonderful right that we have, but we also have a responsibility. If you don't understand what's happening, you need to get the moderator's attention and ask whatever you need to know, so that you can understand what's happening in the meeting. So you have that responsibility to make sure it's clear. If you don't understand what's going on, are we on the amendment to the amendment? Find out, because you're probably not the only one who doesn't understand that. All right. So those are the comments I had on the, you know, basics of town meeting, what our culture We find it handy, we find it friendly, community building, if you sit with somebody that you know or you don't know, and if somebody has a question, you can just lean over and say, what? Who was that? What did they say? I don't understand. But it's a good time to reach out. So we had our little practice session before getting to talk to people. You can do that. If you're, notice, or you find out that somebody's new to town, this is their first time at town meeting, they're a young person who hasn't done this before, you can sit near them and give them support to encourage them to participate in the town meeting. Okay, questions at this point? We're good. All right, so now we're going to do the fun part, which is, we're moving through this faster than I thought, so that's great. I've asked Paul if he'll stand and, you know, come up front here and act as our moderator for our practice, our non-binding resolution article. Okay. Questions at this point? We're good. All right. So, now we're gonna do the fun part, which is, we're moving through this faster than I thought, so that's great. I've asked Paul if he'll stand and, you know, come up front here and act as our moderator for our practice, our non-binding resolution article.
So, at town meeting, what will happen is we'll go through the warning just as it's laid out. We allow discussion. Basically, at the very beginning of town meeting, I'll, I'll stand up and give the rules, which is, we run by Robert's Rules. It's the motion, no more than two amendments to that one motion. We'll go step by step through it. It's kind of shutting off your cell phone, making sure that the microphone gets there before you start speaking. Again, a lot of that is for fact TV as well, so everybody in the auditorium can hear you. And what we, what we try to do is allow absolutely everyone to speak. And we'll go around the room once and then we'll go back around the room if, another, you know, a person who's already spoken once, we allow them to speak twice on each article if they so want. So, just to kind of run through this, if somebody would like to make the motion, whoever has the motion.
Steve.
Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $1,000 to be used by Sustainable Rockingham for the development of neighborhood mutual aid networks?
Okay.
So, we have a motion that has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, can I speak to this?
Absolutely.
Laurel Green, I live in Bellas Falls. So, I'm the current chair of Sustainable Rockingham, and we would like to see this motion pass, this article pass. We have the vision of administering these funds. The $1,000 would be split into 10 grants that could be awarded to neighborhoods that have a cluster of 10 or more citizens to create a sense of neighborhood in their, in their locale within the town of Rockingham. The funds would need to be expended within this fiscal year. And we have two things in the documentation. One is receipts for the direct costs that they have. And the other is that they have photographs of the art, of the activities they do so that we can promote this throughout the rest of the town. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Does the person need to ask permission to speak when you call on her? That's pretty formal and I couldn't know if that was what we were expecting.
Oh, no. Actually, once, once I recognize it, you're off and running. Again, it's really wait for the microphone and the minute you get the microphone there, you can, you can know.
Point of clarification, like you have a point, because a person that's not a resident of the town has to ask permission to speak with the permission of the body. All voters will say yes, let them speak.
And, and correct. So, if, whether it's a superintendent or a principal at the beginning of, of the meeting or whoever it is, we'll, we'll basically point out and say, you know, our financial person does not live in the town of Rockingham. She lives in the town of Westminster. But from the will of the people, if a question is asked and we need to reference her, I'm assuming everybody is going to allow her to speak. Is that assumption correct? And, and basically, unless you have somebody object to it, then we actually will vote to allow people to, to speak.
And I recognize that I'm actually kind of sitting behind him, so that's why I drew his attention to me.
Is there any other discussion on this motion? Yes.
Microphone?
I am Ginger Driscoll. I live in Bellas Falls. I'm in favor of this article because this idea recognizes individual and community strengths and community needs.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Mark Hunden. I live in Bellas Falls. I'm in favor of this article. Communication is best person to person. And we currently have a core system of getting word out in emergencies. Oops.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Yeah, Meg Lucas, Satchis River, and I'm actually against this article because I don't see how we're going to get this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, I'm Delilah Hall. I'm a resident of Bellas Falls. I am not in favor of this article because it costs taxpayer money for nothing important.
Oh, I'm that person.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Amy Howlett, Saxon's River. Could someone respond to the question about administering the money? That seems like a good question to me.
Okay. So, I'm going to look to Laurel, who is the head of this, to respond, please.
Great question, thank you. Yeah, the idea is that we will put out public information about the grants through the paper and probably fact TV from Portform, other resources like that. So, people know that this program is happening. We'll probably have a public meeting to disseminate information. But the actual administration of it will be handled by Sustainable Rockingham to create a grant form for people to apply and for us to receive those grants, make the decision, disperse the monies, and then receive the reports back from each of the neighborhood groups. So, that's the idea.
Any other discussion? Jamie.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Jamie Barrett, resident of Bellas Falls. And I really feel that this initiative is long overdue. It's very important for our community and I'd like to amend the article. And I would like to increase the article. Instead of proposing $1,000, I would like to make this $5,000 and I think it would be more beneficial for everyone in our community.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we have an amendment on the floor. Is there a second to the amendment?
A second amendment?
The amendment has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Yes.
Amy Howlett, Saxon's River. Could someone say what raising $2,000 would do to our tax rate? Oh, $5,000.
$5,000.
$5,000. Could they, could they round me? People are paying attention.
But you're looking at me.
I want to say that it's a-
$5,000, and actually, the tax rate works this way. For every $50,000 you spend, it's a penny on your tax.
I go to keep that.
So, $5,000, probably in a tangible way. I want to quote another person that said that in the scheme of things, it's not a big deal. But we have a lot of other articles that are up there for this, for, as we call, social services. And that is starting to increase up highly. And I know at one point, we had it as high as $120,000. And we reduced it down to 72 and now it's back up to 95 this year. So, that's all I'll say, but.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Russell.
Mr. Moderator, I'm not sure if some amendment of the original motion, I'm never heard of Sustainable Rockingham.
Great question, because it's kind of went quiet during COVID. Before COVID happened, there was a series of three meetings called, Let's Take Action, Rockingham. And over 300 people from town came together and thought of lots of ways to make Rockingham a more interesting, vivacious, and great place to live. And there's a wonderful report on the back table over there talking about what happened, came down with three main initiatives, and Sustainable Rockingham is one of those, to provide more resilience in our community.
Any other discussion on the amendment? On the amendment? So, the amendment is, yes?
I'd like to see the amendment defeated and go back to the original motion of $1,000. My reasoning for that is that $5,000 is significant and this is a trial balloon. I'd just like to see how it plays out and then make the decision next year whether we push more money on it or maybe it doesn't work at all. I don't think it's a bad idea. I just don't see amending the article that much.
Any other discussion? Priscilla.
I am Priscilla Labor. I grew up here and live in the rural town of Rockingham. I am not in favor of the amendment or the, or the article because people should be self-sufficient and do this without needing a grant from their town. Thank you.
It's a different point of order. An article such as this would probably have to be brought to the town meeting by petition. That means you have to go around the brewer of this article, whoever wants to propose the issue, would have to get a petition and get 30 signatures, I think that's 5%, of the voters in the town to back it. Then they can, they went to the select board, select board would then put it on the town warning.
So, any other discussion on the amendment? So, we will be voting on the amendment next, or right now. And the amendment is to raise the dollar amount from $1,000 to $5,000. All those in favor of the amendment would say aye?
Aye.
Opposed would say no?
No.
The moderator is in doubt, so all those in favor of the motion would please stand?
Favor of the amendment or the motion?
Amendment.
Thank you.
Okay. All those opposed would say no? I would stand, please? So, the amendment has been defeated, nine to seven. So, we're back to the original motion. Is there any other discussion on the original motion?
Mr. Moderator, if I understand correctly, we can't add money to the budget at town meeting. We can ask the select board to-
You, you can add money to the budget. You cannot direct the select board exactly where that money is going to go.
So, we vote yes.
So, you're basically accepting the bottom line of the budget. That's, that's what it really is. But it is up to the select board to determine where that money is spent. Or any board, whether it's school board or wherever. I would, I would think that most select board members, if, if the community stands up and says, we want to add $50,000 because we want to add this position, I would think that most members of the select board, trustees or a school board, would listen to their voters and, and do that. But there are certainly, I've seen boards that have not done that.
That's right. Just, but the point is, it's not absolute.
It is not absolute. That is correct. Peter?
This is a point of clarification also. When you vote on the town budget, that's what you're voting on. It's the amount of money for the town budget. This is a separate article that is voted separately from that. It's not adding to the budget, it's adding to your tax rate. That's the difference you want to understand. Every article on there, 17 of them this year, adds money to the base budget. The library is $136,000, of which the town appropriates a certain percentage of that. And that's where your tax was. Right now, the, the library articles ain't have cents on your tax rate. Then there's four or five different articles. Although they explain if the budget, when I present the budget at the town meeting. So, we'll explain everybody that presents an article. All the select board members, whether they know it or not, they will be put through on, have five articles to present. You need to present each one and they can speak to it and be questioned on that article. But all of those articles adds money to the base budget, just so you know.
So, any other discussion on the art? Yes.
Amy Howlett, I, I, actually, I like the idea of the article and I like the idea that there is grant funding to neighborhoods. I think this makes a lot of sense in a time when it's hard to get to know your neighbors, but we really want a strong, a strong feeling of community. So, I think this is, now that we've defeated the amendment, I think this is a good motion and I urge my fellow colleagues to vote for it.
Any other discussion? There are no other discussions. Does everyone have the motion in mind? And if so, all those in favor of the motion would say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the motion passes. And then we move on to the next article on the warning.
Well, Amy, I love that third through fifth graders around the state of Vermont are working on this also. I think, I think it's such great practice. And it is hard to stand up and speak, not, not for me, obviously, I've been doing it way too long. But I, it's, it's something unique about Vermont, you know? We, we still really have this kind of government. And people change their minds because of what is said at town meeting. That's, that's really, that's amazing.
And I, you know, I just, Peter, I want to say thank you for the ads that you had because I didn't, you know, remember to say that about how we have the base budget and then these articles add on to that, but it's important. People really care about that factor and you just talked about it so clearly. So, I appreciate that.
So, understanding, I mean, we have a pretty small community here and a lot of people know a, a lot of people. Just one of the points of order in Robert's Rules is if, if you do have a question and want to be recognized, you go through the moderator and, and you keep your question to the moderator and you don't go, Peter, or to the town manager. You want to put the question through to the town, the moderator before, and, and he'll direct the board to, to address it. But it's just something that gets lost sometimes and somebody stands up to speak to it and they'll go right to the select board person or the town manager and, and voice their concern or whatever. But it really should go to the moderator.
And that would be part of my instructions. Right, exactly. At the beginning of the meeting, always that. All questions are directed to the moderator and, and I'm really just, I'm the guy that's directing traffic up there.
And then, and then halfway through, everybody forgets that there's a stoplight and they just-
Good point. The time the discussion gets, it sort of gets lost.
It's a really clear example of the culture that's, that surrounds our town meetings. Like, I really wanted to say, but Amy, you've done a neighborhood get together more than once. How did that work out? Why didn't you tell all the good people about it? But I didn't because that, I wouldn't, that, that's not how you do it. You talk to the moderator. So, if you want to hear personally about how it works in a small town where somebody has taken this effort, and he's done it, and Steve and I have done it, to set up the neighborhood meetings, so.
Just, just like to bring up another point. There is something, is a paper ballot that can be done at the town meeting. Person can stand up and if he has seven people that go with him and agree with her, he or her, that they want to go paper ballot, which is, I think Laurel was friends with her, it takes forever to get through it because depending on the crowds. You can request a paper ballot on a vote if the, if the discussion gets real tense and, you know, somebody can stand up and say, I, I, I want, I want to go to a paper ballot. So, we have a bunch of little yes and no ballots out, out the back and we have actual ballot box. And you can go down through it, there's a waste basket in the ballot box. You rip off which one you want and you put it in the ballot box and throw the other away. The end of that whole process, everybody gets their seat back and a bunch of BCA people, five or six of them will come down and they stand up front, count all the ballots and that's your chance to go to visit with your neighbor while the commune is going. Then the, then the results is announced and you go from there. Just so you know, that's a possibility that could come up.
Great, thank you. All right. So, thank you all for your willing participation in that, you know, like, I was the one who sat down and wrote out pro and con and amendment things. As you know, you've got little, some of you've got little slips of paper to participate. You don't get those when you go to town meeting.
Right.
You have to come up with it yourself. But hopefully people feel empowered to do that. So, I just want to clarify the dates and I got a marker because, you know, I didn't put the school dates on here, I wasn't sure about them. So, I've got a little room at the bottom, they won't be in chronological order, but we'll add them at the bottom. The first, most important thing is March 4th. Town meeting has been postponed. It's not going to happen. I just want to be really clear about that. Tuesday, March 5th, people can come to the Masonic Temple between eight and seven, eight in the morning and seven at night. And the presidential primary, I think there's a half a dozen candidates on both the Republican and the Democrat ballot. The Bellas Falls Union High School budget is on there because it's over several different towns that they all have to be voted on the same date so that they can influence us. River Valley Tech Center district budget also, same thing. I think that's all that's happening.
So, and Laurel, just on the presidential- So, and Laurel, just on the presidential primary, the state of Vermont has changed the law, so you have to declare, before what you do is get, you'd get free ballots, a Republican ballot, a Democratic ballot, and then a progressive or libertarian or whatever the third party was. And what you would do is you would vote one of them, and two of them would go into kind of the throwaway box, and the other one would run through the machine. Now what happens is you, as you begin, you have to declare what primary ballot that you want. So if it's Democratic, Republican, or, and I think that's really the only two this year, I don't think there is a libertarian or a progressive.
So, for clarification?
Yeah.
For mail-in ballots, what, you'll get both?
No, you will not. When you, when you call to get a mail-in ballot, an absentee ballot, you have to declare, or you, or you will have had to, if you send an email, Tom Clerk should be getting back to you and asking you what's-
You have to choose ahead of time.
You have to choose ahead of time.
Okay.
Something to do.
I'm just curious, is there any idea of what this is going to do to voting? As in the number of people who show up, you know, it's split into different months, different days, different-
We're going to see.
I mean, does anybody have any idea of what they think is-
Do you have a crystal ball?
No, I don't know, I guess it's probably a stupid question, but it's been one that's been on my mind, as to what is this going to do to our vote, because this one mistake was made, it's a very important thing.
Last year, we had a hundred and twenty people show up for town meeting. It's been, it's kind of crazy, if you look at the, I've got five years worth of information, and the largest turnout was when we had a presidential election, and after that election went by, prior to that, there were three years, there were right around four or five hundred people. They did not all attend the town meeting where you do the, where you vote on everything in person. Those are the only people who voted by ballot on the schools, Australian ballot voting. Same thing, the, I think there was about four hundred or so people before that, the presidential election polls, there was about thirteen hundred that voted for that.
Presidential?
Yeah.
No, we had, in 2020 presidential, we had fifteen hundred and ninety vote absentee-
Right.
-because of COVID. And then after polls, we had like another three hundred actually come to the polls and vote. So we had almost eighteen hundred.
So then the next year, it lags right back now to, you know, small turnout.
I have a question about March fourth. The voting for the budgets, the school budgets, is on the fifth, and normally there'd be some discussion, I think, at the meeting the day before.
Well, what will end up happening, and correct me if I wrong, but on Monday night, the twenty-sixth of February, at the Union High School, the Union High School will have their annual meeting and explain the Union High School budget. The VOTAC meeting takes place on February twenty-ninth, up in Springfield, if you want to, and those are the two, two that you'll be voting on on March fifth.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. Normally, there would be a portion of that happening on the fourth, and now it's being absorbed into-
Actually, no.
No?
The high school has never explained their budget at a town meeting.
Okay.
They have their own annual meeting.
Right.
Thank you. You're showing us the wings.
And the tech center always has their own annual meeting, and they're always prior to regular town meeting of March fourth of this year, wouldn't it?
How was the NESU budget? I know that's all done in a meeting with the NESU board, and is it, is it the pulse meeting?
No, it is not.
So, for years, I've been trying to get to an administrator, "Please listen and others, the voters, vote on that budget, we don't get a chance." The only way you can do it is to vote down your local town school budget, because the issue is just an administrative ballack, they, all their costs are disseminated to all the districts. So if you want to know anything with the NESU budget, you have to vote your own local school budget down, which gets complicated after a while.
That doesn't work, Peter, because once the WNESU gives their assessment to the local town school budgets, if the local town school budget is voted down, the town school district cannot cut the WNESU assessment. So the only decreases will be where the local town school-
That's putting that fourth part of the whole board through.
Yeah. Twenty-five years ago, I was trying to fix that, too.
So the real is not control of that, Peter, what you're saying? In the town?
Nope.
There's no-
Voters don't get a vote.
Excuse me, we got hands? Let's leave it to yourself.
What does the acronym WNESU stand for?
Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union.
Union.
Okay, thank you.
But you're right, it's alphabet soup, if you don't actually say words. All right. So, did I write this down correctly, the twenty-sixth is the Union High School?
At seven P M.
Okay, thank you. And the River Valley Tech Center?
Seven P M.
They're what, the seventh? Okay. Okay. Who's first?
Priscilla, just for slight clarification, the WNESU budget includes things like your special education teachers, your central office staffing, transportation for the district, and some other things that are in that budget, but then they're assessed back to the towns, because they have no money of their own.
How do the voters have control if Monday we manage it? That's, that's, that's-
I think what it is, is each school board has three reps that go to the supervisory union, that are on the supervisory board. So, so the way the public has control over something like that would be through your representative, either at, on the Rockingham Board, or the Union High School Board.
But it's, I mean, a town would have to not be a part of the WNESU.
Correct, and that's, and it's all by state statute.
Is that on the table? I'm not saying this is a vote, I just, I'm actually a little surprised, I've done this for years, and I didn't realize that right now, that you, there's no control over, on the union's budget, except for the representatives.
Okay, Amy, you have your hand up.
I just want to give you one more date, the municipality of Saxons Rivers, but annual meeting is Monday, April twenty-second, at seven P M, and it's held at the Accessible Main Street Arts Building, is Thirty-Five Main Street.
I don't have room for all of that.
It's fine, just put the meeting card.
Saxons River Village meeting, right?
Yeah, it's our annual meeting.
Seven P M?
Yep.
All right.
And the Bellas Falls Village meeting is actually going to be May twentieth, and voting on May twenty-first.
I should have made it, I should have brought a home, a piece of paper. Uh, May twentieth?
Yes.
Yeah. Kind of confusing, you said the voting's coming, so you might want to claim that, you said, it's just like the town meeting, the village meeting is also voted, the budget articles are all voted in person at the village meeting, the officers are voted the following day. It gets confusing when you, we got five or six different voting things going on here. You know, it's like I was saying, who's on first? What's on second, third?
I hope everybody brought their calendars and the right holiday stamp.
Thank you. My name's Jason Terry, I'm the chair for Union High School Board. I think one thing to consider, going back to the WNESU and how that's, we have a law in the books in this town that we have equal representation on the high school board, WNESU, so Rockingham gets three representatives, every, every part of the school, Crafton, Saxons River, not Saxons River, Westminster, they all get three on the WNESU, so to increase your voice on that would be to change that rule that was nineteen sixty-something to have, because Rockingham has more students that go to the high school than any other town, so we currently have three, and we should, you know, change that rule and get in more representation, or bigger votes.
Great, thanks for having me conversation. All right. So, got to figure out where we are. So we talked about the dates, a lot. So, well, I'd like to make some time now for Rick to talk about the results of the survey that came up earlier, and it, I think it is maybe why there's extra interest in town meeting participation. Mr. Rick, would you take the floor?
All right, thanks. I'm Rick Callan, member of the select board, and I'm in my third one-year term and running for another three-year term. As Peter mentioned, we had less than three percent of the town's registered voters show for town meeting last year, and this is not a problem just for Rockingham, it's all over the state, people are struggling with this. In fact, on Vermont Edition, Amy's daughter-in-law, who runs Vermont Edition, brought this to the topic, and there were, had a woman, an expert, speak about it, and lots of people called in, lots of towns in Vermont are struggling. But we hold up, the New England Town Meeting is this paragon of direct democracy, yet a tiny percentage of our voters are there. So this came up at last year's select, at last year's meeting, and for reasons I may or may not regret, Bonnie North and I volunteered to do a survey of the entire town, and find out where people, what can we do to increase participation? So we, and the select board gave us a little budget, and we printed and sent it, and most of you, I hope, perceive this card. So we sent that out, and Bonnie is the mission here, Bonnie is a survey monkey, wizard, and she managed to pull all the pieces together. And we got, the result from the mark of three hundred and sixty-eight people responded, and just beyond the issue at hand, people were flattered that we asked them about something. We got, I mean, there are hundreds of comments that came in with ideas, all kinds of ideas from the town. So it's kind of neat that we got that kind of response. The, we asked a lot of different things, and it was, as you can see from the thickness, this is the, these are the results here, and so I am not going to bore you all with everything that came out. Fortunately, Meg Lucas, who's right here, agreed to summarize it, presented a little, maybe a little one-page summary of what the results were.
With Steve's help.
With Steve's help. This was going to be distributed at the town meeting, the select board voted last Tuesday that we will have a special meeting. This, there's so much already going on on this, this warning, there's what, thirty-one articles, Peter? Thirty, something like that. So we voted to have a special town meeting within the next six months to decide on, shall we move the town meeting to a Saturday instead of a Monday night? There was a, we're sending people, by the way, we all voted last year to continue the in-person town meeting, so there was no, there's no question that people want to have the face-to-face interaction that, as documented, is important here. When that happens and how that happens, so the format of the meeting, including things like childcare, transportation, having it on a different day, so those are things that we're trying to figure out where people stand on, and a special town meeting will give us a chance to discuss those matters. The, I'm just going to walk through very briefly the summary, which you will all be seeing on April first. So seventy-one percent of the participants, respondents, agreed, that's two hundred and sixty-two out of three hundred and sixty-four, I think. New England Town Meetings are a valuable tradition that brings voters together in person to discuss and vote, they should continue to be held in person, so there's a pretty strong majority, so there's no question that we want to, want to go to Australian ballot, although many commentators here made very good points about how they feel their voice is lost, they can't be there, and so we have to have at some point, and so we're thinking that making it easier for more people to come is what we want to do. Eighty-two percent of the, a hundred and ninety respondents named the inconvenience of evening town meeting as being a factor that discouraged them from attending. So we have older people who don't like to drive at night, we have older people who like to go to bed at eight-thirty.
Younger people, too.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I think it's our people.
Our people, a lot of people don't like to stay up late. Forty-four percent agree that having school board meeting on the same time, at the same time makes for a long night. So if, you know, the school board meeting this time will start, we, the town meeting starts at seven, school board begins at seven, what time will get to the town meeting? Who knows? But it'll probably be after eight-thirty, so, good guess. So that's a, that in itself is an inhibiting factor for lots of our citizens. Sixty respondents said having childcare available would make it easier for them to attend. Thirty-eight respondents said having transportation available would make it easy for them to attend, and a hundred and forty-five respondents preferred Saturday, Sunday, or daytime meetings. Now, we've got some sampling of comments, and the comments are fascinating, I was just amazed at what came out. They ranged from, "This was a stupid idea, why are you wasting taxpayer money?" to "Thank you so much that you've done this." So-
Welcome to Pawlton.
Exactly. So, I mean, I was really cheered by some, I'm a little, whoa, really, really, and so this is available, by the way, there's a link, and you can read these comments, if people are interested, we have a link that you can read all the comments at. So, again, I just have a question briefly.
Sure.
At this point on the town website, you can get the results, but it's, it's a limited presentation mode, they only give you a few of the comments, and that's, Bonnie is trying to correct that, to make it so you can get all, I think there's over four hundred comments that we can read all, it's not up yet, but if any, be in touch with me if you want to read them, I can get you the whole thing now, but it will be up eventually. So, that's about all I have to present, other questions?
General question, as you know, there's struggles across the state, is there any sort of unified statewide effort for, like, if something's working on the other side of the state to get people out? There's been communicated across to all municipalities to improve their participation in town meeting?
Amy recommended this, well, VPR program that happened, was it Thursday?
Or yesterday?
It was yesterday. Anyway, what, there were so many ideas that came out, do you recall any specific?
So, Vermont Edition is usually available as a podcast, so you could go in and look for this, but I think, I think the original presentation was yesterday and yesterday night. But no, it's not on Friday, so it must have been Thursday. Sorry. One of the things that really came home to me was the statement that if you've been to one town meeting, you've been to one town meeting. So I think the biggest difference across Vermont is how big you are. I mean, for years, I lived in a town of six hundred, and everybody, I mean, I'm sure there are people that never went, but people went, and, you know, you spent four or five hours, and you had a potluck lunch that you could smell as soon as it got to be eleven-thirty. And it's, it's hard to see how you pull off a potluck for a town like Rockingham, it's just, it's big. Rattlemore was a participatory town meeting, which is very different.
Representative.
I'm sorry, representative, yeah. So people participate, but in a very different way, so, I mean, I like the idea, and this is legislatively set also, so, you know, it could change, but I guess my answer is no, I don't, I don't see that happening.
I'll definitely listen to the program.
Yeah. So the program is about Craftsbury and to some extent Danville, who got Susan Clark to work on issues and bring out discussion points, and think about things they might legally do slightly differently.
Yes. Our neighbors from Southwestminster, twenty years ago, they realized they had the same program- problem and they moved it to Saturday. And so you're not making decisions at nine thirty, like, so on. It seems to have worked well for them. We might consult them and see how they made that decision. But before I stand down, I really want to thank you and Rattlemore for pulling together. I mean, I've learned so much today, but, and I'm so like, we're, we're ashamed, I know some of the stuff, but you guys are great and I really appreciate you doing it.
Yeah, no shame. No shame.
I think Jamie had a question over there.
No, Rick actually called on me before I could ask it. And that was, not just from the survey results, but because it seems like Westminster is having some success with their Saturday is why that kind of conversation was coming up and the survey kind of shows of maybe Saturday would be a better idea, but.
Kind of answered the question of what we can do. There's a few, on the resource table though, there's a few books that are library books here that you can check out. But one of them especially, All Those in Favors, the title of the book, just has, I went through and jotted down the good ideas in there for improving participation in town meeting. And I came up with over 40 different ideas in that book. You know, I would love everybody in town to read it and get inspired. It's also, besides just what can we do to make it work better to get more people involved, it also is inspiring. It's like, oh yeah, that's why I believe in this, why it's important. So I urge you all to take a look at that and, you know, somebody go check it out today and the rest of you put it out bold. But the, beyond that, it's some of the obvious things, like the survey showed, and again, this is whatever, about 300 and some people responded to the survey, but, but of those, between the people that said childcare would help or transportation would help them get to town meeting, it was 98 people said that. And on the percentage wise of a town of whatever, 3, 4,000 people, you know, 98 people isn't that significant. But when we have what Peter said, you know, coming to town meeting, 100, 200 people show up, if they get another 98 people, would be significant. That's worth doing. So there's things like that. The meeting today, there's things like volunteers figuring out how to offer rides to town meeting or have some refreshments there just to make it feel more welcoming. If you signed up on your way in, thank you. It's the sign-in sheet if you didn't on your way out. But there's a place there to check if you're potentially interested in helping to offer, you know, help with food at town meeting this year or offer rides, check it down and we'll be back in touch with you, we'll sign you up for that. And, and I think really any way we can build community spirit makes town meeting work better. It's a tool, they both build on each other. A strong town meeting helps build community spirit in other ways in our town. But anything we can do to, you know, everything we can do to reach out to our neighbors and look out for each other then gets the town to be a more, it gets the community to be more important to all of us and therefore we're more likely to show up at town meeting and take part. So I think it builds.
Yeah. The other thing we could consider is that, we mentioned Westminster, but Grafton has theirs all in March 5th, on the same day that they do their Australian balloting. They hold their meeting in the morning and go until that's done. And then they do their Australian balloting afterwards, so it only buys up the one day for them. So if we're concerned about, you know, multiple days, like especially this year, and we're looking at multiple days, that's something that could be considered as well.
Right. So I'm really glad we're going to have a special meeting to consider, there's a lot of variants that we could look at and we'll have a deep thorough discussion of it and hopefully that'll generate even more interest in part in meeting. One of the things that, sort of how I read the survey is, what are the things that are barriers to participation? So a couple of them have been mentioned that we're addressing this year, transportation and having food, having, well, time to sit around and, you know, sip your cup of tea and talk to people as you're heading into town meeting.
It'll be coffee later at night.
Coffee late at night. They found a coffee urn, so it's going to help you get through. Considering the day of the meeting, the time of the meeting and providing childcare things that help, you know, those may help get rid of some of those barriers to participation. But I want to take a straw poll on another idea. Who here loves to step up to a microphone and talk into it? Am I the only one? Oh, yeah.
I don't need a lightweight child. But I would like to just play the mic and voice.
I'm not shy.
Not shy?
Yeah.
But a lot of people are. And I think that's actually a barrier to town meeting. So I would love to see a practice session where people get to just use the actual mic to the meeting to stand up and say, hello, my name is Philano and I live here in town and I don't know what I'm going to say and I'm scared to death and my knees are shaking and my mouth is getting dry, but I hear my voice over the loudspeaker for the first time in my life. This is amazing. Wouldn't that be a fun session to have?
Longer thing, this year, one thing we're trying to do to improve the town meeting is we're working in conjunction with the Plague, the Pudler on Roof. They have offered their sound system for us, so we will be able to have, hopefully, a meeting without the screech, backfeed and everything to the microphone, so it should work. I know BackTV is trying to work that out also with them. They're all, everybody's trying to work together naked. And the meeting will be held upstairs in the opera house. So hopefully we get a turnout, otherwise we'll probably end up back downstairs again.
Yeah, it was, it was too bad last year that there were people, there was people lining, all the seats were taken, lining the back of the room and people out the door because they couldn't even get in. And that was with, our pitiful load turned out of 120 or so.
Well, that's going to be a present initiative because the voting, if there is a paper ballot voting, it's all going to take place. Back it out railing in the back room because if any of you have walked into that opera house and saw how they've adjusted their stage, they've blocked off the whole front, so you're going to have to vote in the back, so it's going to be a confusion and this could be fun for a few minutes.
We've got to keep it positive. I appreciate that. I still see humor. All right. So that's what I had to present. We've done really good with questions and answers throughout, but we've got a little time here to do that and then I want a few minutes for closing lesson.
This is just to address Alex's point about the supervisor reunion. It isn't statute. I was able to find it and look it up. So if we wanted to make a change, you would have to go through the legislature and changing the law, which is a major deal.
We were just surprised by that.
Yeah, I just find it, understand the rules of it, is it isn't statute.
Is that a, is that a rule for all schools?
Yes.
Say what?
Okay, that clear flies a lot. That way you just definitely get, you can't stand up and see it. With Australian balloting, you can't change it. You either vote for yes or no. Town meeting where we do, we can change numbers anywhere we want, right there. People say, I want to cut $200,000 of the town budget. You can do it right there at the meeting, you can vote for it. If it passes, as Paul explained, it goes back to the Select Board. You can't tell us where you want to cut it, but we have, we have to follow your direction. That's the difference between Australian and, I know at one time we had three meetings for a school board, three, three votes for a school board. And it got frustrating to find everybody who said, heck, let me just go in and get it over with. So I don't know if you remember that last, those three votes we had, I think.
Wait, I'm just going to add another thought on, on public notice. The, the village did this last year and I don't think the town did this, but might be worth a shot. We purchased a banner that we hung in the square. The, you know, reflected the dates and times of village, the whole, all the village meeting and whatnot. So that might be another idea for the town to get a banner and can hang it in the square and, you know, people see the date.
This year, you will see the, the town warning is not going to be published in the chapter before the town meeting. So you'll, people will have a chance to read the whole town warning, some of the comments we got in the survey, where I don't understand what we're voting on. Doesn't make a difference what you understand about, at least you're going to know what you're going to vote on. But that's, we haven't done that in years, so I don't know why we stopped the procedure of posting it out there, but I made it a point to get it on there this year, so you will see it.
So I just want to comment on what Wade said. When we did the Rockingham, Let's Take Action Rockingham meetings, one of the things that came up from many different points of view was, there's not one central place to get information about what's happening in our town. The communication piece is really key. And that's something for us to consider, how we can do a better job of that. You know, people shouldn't have to depend on, you know, pulling together from many, many different sources.
And the banner we bought, we can just use it from year to year and just, you know, change the date.
Yeah, so Jamie Barrett, and so I just wanted to thank everybody that had a part of this. I think it's great. And I know that the town, the village, the survey, everybody's been working hard on, you know, increasing town meeting participation. But I encourage everybody out there to get more involved all year long with, whether you are from Saxton's River, Bellows Falls, Rockingham, listen to the meetings that are televised, go and attend a meeting and be part of it so you're better informed, you can make better decisions and you can really bring some good ideas to, you know, town meeting that you've been following along. So if it is an article or if it's a point of interest, you, you know, you have the background and information. It's not just, you know, oh, I heard this or I heard that. You've actually attended and it just really helps as a community to grow, to attend these meetings. And listen, there's a lot of, there's the Planning Commission, there's the Historical Commission, there's the Lock and Bike Committee, there's the fire equipment, there's a lot, a lot of stuff going on in our community. And, you know, just, just be a little active, get involved and, you know, just support our Select Board members, our trustees, because it's not easy, right? And it's a hard discussion at town meeting, but it's a civic duty and it's a great place to go, see your neighbors and just talk about your community and get a good budget and what's good out there for everybody. But thank you, everybody, for putting this together.
Yeah, Steve, I would like to call on you to say a little bit about the candidate form.
Yeah. Ben, let's see, Anne Dempsey here, the events coordinator for the library. And I have just been talking about, now that there's a reprieve until the date of voting has been changed, to try and get together to have a candidates forum. And we're beginning with the idea of candidates for the, for the contested Select Board one year position. And we, I, it's not set yet, but in the process of touching base with those five candidates and trying to set dates. What we haven't, I'm not sure that we have, I'm not sure that we have enough bandwidth to do the same for the, for any, I'll say contestants, school director divisions. It would be great if that could happen. You know, no one has stepped forward this year to, my understanding is BackTV doesn't have the resources at this point to, to set up, you know, and manage a candidates forum for the schools either. So I don't know, if someone, if someone has some energy to, to kind of help with any of that, it might be possible to expand that and, and make it go for the school directors as well, because that would be great to do.
Would you like them to contact you?
Yeah, talk to me just here before, if you're interested, like, talk to me before we, we can.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just the, it's being, putting the form together. Maybe we can film it again this one. So anyone in this room that wants to call people up and, you know, schedule a location and manage the, the form, absolutely. It's easy for us to film it then. It's the herding cats. We don't, we don't have the time this one to do. But yeah, so if anyone wants to put on a form, absolutely. Or if they want to come in and utilize our resources, I mean, we're a community platform. The station is, I just manage it for, for the service of the community. So the doors are always open. It's your platform to be able to utilize. So anyone can come in there and, you know, and get service assistance in terms of, you know, say like, you know, video production and so on and so forth. So just want to throw that out there. It's a, it's a resource for you to utilize and we're here to help you utilize that resource.
Great.
I was wondering one thing about the, are you guys, what do you guys have for a budget for your town meeting, marketing promotion and paying for, were you guys considering that or is that what the whole survey was for?
For, for your organization?
No, 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 no. For, for, for promoting town meeting and, and providing funds for the promotion and also for the day of town meeting. What do you guys usually budget out?
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah.
No, I'm just, I'm just, is there been a budget for that?
We have a budget for, for the changeover to, to all the additions these organizations want to then, that.
Well, I mean, like the actual budget for promoting the annual meeting, a budget, you know, for marketing promotion, like radio, you know, mailers. And then, you know, hey, you know, annual town meeting, you kind of make it kind of a little bit of a festive, you know, celebrate Rock, have a Rockingham fair. Did you ever have, has there ever been a budget for promoting, you know, and getting away from that?
As far as I know, I don't think there has been.
Cash should be able to get people.
The only, the only thing we probably need money for was Rick and Bonnie's survey.
No, I didn't, yeah.
It's that, other than, all the signs in the, in the papers or whatever, on BackTV and at the movie theater, the, the stuff that's about there, but there's no real budget in the top of that.
Yeah, no, I just wanted.
Okay. Thank you for, good question. And Alex, a big thank you to you and Rick again for coming and filming today and making this available. A big thank you to the library and to Anne Dempsey who put energy into making this happen. Of course, I really appreciate the folks on the working group who've been supportive and are all, each of us taking on a different role and getting the word out about how to participate in town meeting. Special thanks to our guests, the different officials in our town. You do heroic work, amazing amount of hours. It's incredible, the work that people put in to make this town function as well as it does and getting better all the time. I just, it's moving to me, right? And thank you to all of you for coming today, for taking an hour and a half out of your Saturday to come think about how to make our town livelier and more participatory and more democratic. It makes a big difference. Each one of you make a difference. So thank you for coming today. Steve, you want to just say a couple words for the?
Sure. Yeah, this is sort of already said, but I guess I want to say in my own words that the fact that, you know, here in the United States, we get to vote for legislators and executives to, in our government, it's, it's special. It's not everywhere in the world that we get to do that. But here in Vermont and in a few other places, but very, very few, we actually have the chance to be citizen legislators. It's, it's different. When we go to town meeting and not just, you know, voting by ballot, but when we actually get to go to town meeting and take part in an in-person discussion with our neighbors, we actually have the ability to create, amend, deny actual legislation. You know, what we decide in town meeting becomes law. And there's, aren't very many places in the world you can do that without getting elected. All you have to do here is live here and be a US citizen and be over 18 years old. You know, it's not a lot, you know, we're lucky, all of us, that, that we can do that. And I just really, just honor how, what a privilege it is to have that ability. And yes, there's a lot of reasons people don't show up and only so few people show up and that's hard. And we're going to, I'm determined to do as much as we can to change that and get as many people participating as possible. But meanwhile-
But meanwhile, it's just really important for us all to remember how valuable it is. And so, thank you for being here and please don't go without helping us dig up fresh eggs up here. That would be terrible.
Or sign up to volunteer to help with the other pieces that are coming to Vermont or town meetings.
Thank you for watching this Fact TV presentation. If you would like a digital or DVD copy of the meeting, please contact us by phone or email. Our phone number is 802-463-1613, or email us at fact@10@gmail.com. Falls Area Community Television, keeping government honest.